It is good, you know.
Meetings are like.
Talking about the Amtrak station.
Last class I'm going to be talking about. And tomorrow to give them an update on what's going on.
Did Chris have to do a lot of to give to me?
What the city had to do.
Okay, there's a.
I was trying to remember.
Art of the possum, right? You know, like how it's an imperfect art.
Right, got you, got you.
So that's good.
What are we doing public gas?
So like group, totally different.
Sure.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay.
Ready, Freddie?
You can try.
All right. Um, I will call the February fifteenth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission to order. I will accept an approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Dr. Berthridge with the motion.
Second.
Ms. Webster with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is approved. We will adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the selection of Chair, Vice Chair and Commission Representatives. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Dr. Berthridge with the motion.
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, uh, usual.
It's open, yeah.
We'll be back.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's in a, um, it's sort of like a bound collection of maps and documents. And I put it in a kind of a holder just to kind of hold it all together. Okay. He mentioned it at the council meeting saying he forgot it, so now I've got it on my mind to ask for it. Otherwise I would have forgotten it. Yeah. I think it's from, I don't know if this is nineteen seventy or twenty one, but it was too awkward to stand for us, so I just said, here, just take the whole thing.
Mr. Perry.
Yes, sir.
Could you join us in referring your full charge of who's on what City Commission made the group?
I have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good that it's true. Here, I guess, could you know, could you type it down?
Yeah.
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 All right. Technically, we have to make a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
So we have a motion from Dr. Berthridge to adjourn from executive session?
Second.
Ms. Webster with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Super. All right, so moving on with the meeting, election of officers and commission appointments.
I would move, um, that we nominate Corey Watt to be the Chair, Shawna Rosenberg to be the Vice Chair. In addition, nominate Corey to remain on the Housing and Architectural Preservation Committee, Shawna to remain on the Housing Advisory Commission, Jason to remain on the Environmental Commission, and nominate to be on the Climate Action Steering Committee. Jeff nominate to be on the Community Improvement Corporation, and Matt to reign on the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board.
All right, we have, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. Uh, do we need a roll call or a voice vote?
You can, you can do, you can do a voice, you can do a voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, seeing none. Uh, we will now move on to item five, approval of the minutes from the December twelfth, twenty twenty three. Uh, just a point of order. Um, obviously, Mr. Crewe wasn't here. I'm trying to remember if everyone else was here.
You can still, even people that, if you were not here, you can still accept, even though you're not approving, you're accepting the minutes as written.
Yeah, okay.
That's an option, too. You don't have to abstain if you weren't here today.
Okay. Um, so do I have a motion? Uh, any changes, corrections, updates, or approval of the minutes as presented?
I would approve, I would mo, make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any objections?
Next.
Uh, right. Uh, and at this point, we will entertain, uh, comments from the public on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Uh, so if you would like to talk about an item that is not on tonight's agenda, feel free to come to the podium. Uh, we will acknowledge you for up to three minutes. And seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, reports from commissions, boards, committees and staff. Uh, Mr. Urbuckle, let's start on your side.
So I was at the, uh, the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board meeting this morning, and I think the biggest thing that came out of that meeting is that they, we seem to have settled the Amtrak platform, uh, in, in, in that developed an alternative to, uh, dealing with the rural building. And so what they've done is created a path that goes by SDS to the Amtrak platform rather than going through the, the rural building site. And so that had been a contentious issue, and they're essentially bypassing that by letting the building stand. And so as a result, the Amtrak platform is proceeding as planned and, uh, gonna move forward to, to get that, so.
And we get to preserve such a monumental structure in our town.
Yes, that keep up the debate as well. Well, uh, well, yes.
You know, on behalf of HA PC, of course. All right, thank you, Sarah. Dr. Berthridge.
Well, I guess I first just kind of often, we recommend things up to council, but unless you watch council ma, uh, or follow the minutes, you may not know what happens. The, the rezoning, uh, on Chestnut Street that the Planning Commission recommended to council went through first and second reading and was approved. Um, uh, from council also, I think Mr. Perry will probably talk about this. What we've, we've started doing is with, um, City Council is to set, we have a retreat in January to set kind of broad goals, but also kind of action items that staff proposes, the council proposes. I would say then in a really great innovative step for us is that everything was framed in terms of the comprehensive plan. So, so, you know, while things may be recommended for, by staff because things are just operational or councils have the things that they are passionate about, there's, the adoption of the co, of the comprehensive plan provides a framework that everything's kind of filtered and related back to. Um, and so that's really good. Uh, Sam will probably talk about one of the things that some of those, or a number of those things bear on the Planning Commission. Um, but our, our priorities are twenty twenty four, but they also look ahead to the budget in twenty twenty five. And the development code rewrite, which I'll defer to Sam on, on the steps ahead with that, is gonna be, uh, money approved and, and RFPs that will be sought, and, and that will be a monumental undertaking for this board, but has huge long-term consequences for us to achieve our goals. Because we have a nice comprehensive plan with ambitious goals, but until you translate them into code, it's, 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 so, so that's gonna be really an important task for us the next couple of years, so.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Mr. Bracken.
Not too much new for environmental. We continue to work on a number of things that we've been working on, particularly things like, uh, recycling at the municipal level and also, uh, public events and things like that.
Perfect. Ms. Webster, do you have anything for the good of the order?
Uh, I don't, thank you.
Uh, as someone new to the commission.
Perfect, I have nothing.
Do you want to provide an introduction? I mean, I think for the community who hasn't met you and some of these, some of these folks are regular attendees who will be before us, so I would love for you to introduce yourself to the.
Uh, hi, everyone. I am Jeff Crueth. I'm a resident, uh, on the south side of Oxford. Um, I've been in the community for about five years, and, uh, I'm a professor of architecture uh, in, at Miami University and, um, have a background in community design and community engagement, uh, as well. So, um, happy to be here and, and join such a good group.
Thank you. Uh, so from Historic and Architectural Preservation Commission, this is gonna sound very bizarre, but I'm excited for tomorrow's meeting. Proposed uptown restrooms. Um, so I, I say that joking because we'll be looking at strictly from the purview of aesthetics and, and more of the function act, functionality and continuity, but, uh, the impact this could have on an economic development standpoint. I mean, it's just, um, we've had the opportunity to, uh, live in and, um, visit, uh, especially in like west Michigan. This is pretty common in a lot of the tourist towns, so, um, to see this is bizarrely exciting for us. Now that our kids are all grown, it's perfect timing, thank you. Uh, but yeah, so we have that, and then there were just some, some signage and vent administrative approvals, uh, nothing horribly exciting, but, uh, yeah, so that's all we have from HA PC. All right, uh, tonight we have a discussion item. Uh, so it's the Concept Plan, South Farm, Section Four. Uh, just to kind of set the framework for this, this is not an item that we will be voting on as an action item, so, um, uh, I think it's fair to say this will be more conversational. By work, uh, well, by rule, um, we don't inherently have public comment, however, um, I, I think, uh, we, we will go that route in general. Um, that is still the same three minutes and things of that nature, but I just, uh, the reason I say that is I don't want folks to think that there's gonna be an action item at this point. And that being said, I realized I never asked you, uh, to, for your.
Thank you. Updates. Sorry. It's okay. It's all right. A little out of, uh. We were just gonna roll with it, it's fine. Um, just to play off of, uh, Dr. Prithridge's comment a little bit, I will make that one comment that we are, uh, going to be do, it's been twenty years since we've done a major zoning code overhaul, uh, so now that the comprehensive plan's in place, it's a great time to do that. And City Council set aside money out of the American Rescue Plan Act to do that. Uh, we're gonna be taking the rest of twenty twenty four and probably all of twenty twenty five to do that. We haven't sought consultants yet, uh, but we're gonna take many of the focus items out of the comprehensive plan to, uh, to guide that process. There's a lot of national trends that have been going on with, uh, housing, climate, economic development, procedural changes. There's just a lot of obstacles in the development process right now that, uh, the planning field is finding are problematic, uh, for communities to be able to adapt to changing needs. So, uh, we're gonna be working on that, and we know there's some good consultants out there, um, and we'll be providing updates along the way, uh, and getting your, uh, feedback as much as possible, although it will be primarily done by the consultant with updates being provided in order to, since we just did a comprehensive plan update, we're not looking to do a lot of community engagement, but we will, uh, let boards and commissions be aware of how things are going. Um, so it'll be a really big project, um, and we'll keep you informed. So that's our, that's gonna be our, uh, big focus over the next couple of years. There's a lot of other things that we're working on as well, transportation and planning related, but that'll, that'll take the lion's share of our time and probably some interns' time as well.
Perfect. Mr. Moore?
Yes, nothing extra from me tonight, except of course, the concept plan.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Um, not that it's a business item, but I, uh, I thought this group would be amused that somebody thought the. somebody thought the city property at the, uh, uh, over by, um, Western Knolls was being developed, they didn't realize the bike trail was going there. Just thought that was amazing, I didn't remember having a conversation about that, but, okay. Now, we will go on to the, uh, discussion item. So, uh, at this point, we don't have to adjourn to public comment, be, or, uh, to a public session, as it is a discussion item, so, Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Planning Commission members, welcome, Mr. Cruth. So we have a concept plan for you tonight, this is for South Farm, Section Four. There's the slides. So this is essentially, uh, a brand-new submittal, but it's very, very similar to a previous submittal that the commission has seen, um, essentially titled the same thing, South Farm, Section Four. This one is from JA Development, Presto Homes. And, uh, this has been submitted by John Baer, Baer Becker. Unfortunately couldn't make it here tonight, so being represented by Etta Reed from Baer Becker, uh, on behalf of JA Development. The property owners involved, so the previous developer essentially still owns the land in question, so it's split between John L. Boyle IV at All and South Farm Development LLC. The site area is 6.81 acres, and current use, it's currently undeveloped, um, so awaiting, uh, development as a subdivision. Current zoning is R1B, single-family, medium-density residential district, and the proposal is to subdivide, or rather re-subdivide, since the lots already presently exist, as it turns out, re-subdividing to accommodate 25 single-family dwelling units. And the site location in question, so this is off of Roberts Drive, which is off of Kerr Road, so this is on the south side of town. Cobblestone Community Church is to the north, and this pond here is owned by the South Farm Owners Association. So this is the existing South Farm phase along Morgan Circle, so this would be adjoining to the west. And this boundary right here, um, actually the 6.81 acres does not include this portion here to the south, this is an easement that the city holds, it's a roadway and utility easement on property that's owned by the Talawanda School District. So all in all, the site area is probably just a little bit above seven acres in total. And here is a look at the current ownership makeup within the vicinity, so everything that's in green is currently owned by Cobblestone Community Church. The pink area, which is identified as HP CT Properties, Inc., that would be the future Heron Pond subdivision, which this commission has seen, um, has gained council approval, and that will be subdivided into nine total lots, eight of which will support new single-family dwellings, and the ninth lot will effectively be there to, uh, preserve the existing driveway access into the church campus. The yellow color, which is to the east, these are all different owners, so it's just kind of lumped together into one category, representing the South Farm residents. There's also property to the south of that owned by a Jonathan V. Lauter. And within the red boundary, the site boundary, you can see the two shades of purple representing John L. Boyle IV at All and South Farm Development LLC. And finally, to the south is the Talawanda School District property, so this gives you a pretty good representation of the existing ownership in the area. And just quickly looking at the current zoning, most of the land is zoned R1B, which is the single-family, medium-density residential district. Property to the east across Kerr Road is agricultural open space, or ALS, so predominantly residential zoning in this area. And looking at the comprehensive plan, so the subject site falls within the urban neighborhood character type, which, uh, within this character type, it's encouraged to have detached single-family, which of course is what's being proposed with this particular subdivision. Encourages compact, walkable, uh, neighborhoods, and parks and open sa, open space to be integrated within, those are some of the recommendations of this character type. Okay, so a history lesson, going back to 1991, some of you may recall this from the presentation from 2019, when the first South Farm Section Four proposal was moving through. So this was the 1991 preliminary plan for South Farm, uh, pretty ambitious as you can see, this included a total of 186 single-family lots and 220 multifamily units, which were, they were to be situated up here on kind of the northern end of the site. Of course, this ultimately never came to be, sparing, of course, the 11 single-family lots that are along Morgan Circle to this day, so this is the only portion of the original plan that ever came to fruition. So that was recorded in 1992. And then in 1998, there were 18 single-family lots recorded as South Farm, Section Two. And, uh, those parcel boundaries in large part remained to this day, so as it turns out, that subdivision was recorded, but the streets were never actually built, so we have basically like a ghost subdivision, if you will, that's, uh, to the west of the existing South Farm phase. And then in 2005, we have the conditional use approval for Cobblestone Community Church. Originally, there were three different buildings that were proposed as part of the campus, and you can see, of course, a significant reduction in the number of residential lots that were planned in conjunction with the church. And then later in 2007, there was a minor amendment to that conditional use to, uh, change some of the footprints of the buildings, um, ultimately, I believe this is the only building that ever was built. Initially, the sanctuary was planned kind of toward the center of the site in this location here. And the reason that it seems we skip, uh, Section Three and go from Section Two to Section Four, as we often refer it, so Section Three was essentially a replat that consolidated all the lots within the purple boundary together. So that dissolved away six of the residential lots, which were along, or supposed to be along, rather, this extended Roberts Drive. So that occurred around 2007. And then, uh, 2020 saw the approval of the final plan development for the original South Farm, Section Four, which included 25 smaller lots intended for kind of cottage-style units, and, uh, there would have been an alley behind the western lots that are kind of loaded or fronted along Hoover Drive to the west, and I'll show you a close-up here in a second of that particular plan. And then later, uh, the next year was Heron Pond, and I'll call this the original Heron Pond, so this was, uh, also a plan development that was approved in 2021, this was for 15 land dominiums along a private street, and that private street would have connected with the intersection of Morgan Circle and Roberts, and then led up to the Cobblestone driveway. Ultimately, the developer for Heron Pond chose to go with an alternative, which was approved by planning and council. Um, so this is the nine-lot development that I mentioned earlier, so this removed the private street from the equation, relied solely on the frontages along Roberts and Kerr Road, so again, nine total lots, eight of which would be slated for future dwelling units. And that one is still valid and approved, so, um, that would be moving forward, hopefully, sometime in the near future. So as it stands today, this is where we are now, so the original South Farm, Section Four, development has now expired, um, as of May of 2023. So now we have a new developer, um, that's coming into the picture and is interested in purchasing the land and developing into a very, very similarly designed subdivision. I'll be sure to point out some of the differences between the previous plan and the new plan that is now proposed as a concept plan. Uh, but a few other things first, so this is the 2007 thoroughfare plan that's currently on the books, so I've highlighted for you the general location of the roadway and utility easement. Um, it varies in width, uh, quite a bit, so on the western side, this width is about 82 feet, and on the eastern side is about 85 feet, um, but I believe this kind of widens as you move further west from Kerr Road. Um, so the width definitely varies across that entire stretch, um, but you can see this, also this blue dash line, this is a major collector road that is proposed within the thoroughfare plan, and this is intended to be kind of the looping connector road that goes around the southern end of town. Um, so the idea with this new proposal is to start to begin the, uh, process of actually building out that roadway, at least from a, a very beginning, um, point in terms of construction, so I'll show you that to you here in a minute. Um, and then also, related to thoroughfares, so we have the planned Oates Route, this is Oates Phase Five that appears on the map extent here, and this is running within the site boundary, and just as the previous proposal did, it is proposed that a small segment of the trail would actually be built with this subdivision, so this would be a multi-use asphalt trail that would eventually be connecting with the rest of Phase Five, which would connect between Phase Three and Phase Four along Oxford Riley. Okay, so now we're zooming into the aerial of the site, and this is a look at the previous South Farm Four plan, so this is the one that's expired. Uh, so again, I'll note that there was an alleyway that was proposed, this would have been a private alley maintained by the Homeowners Association, and this was critical for our fire department to enable the turnaround, uh, for the emergency vehicles. So rather than ending in kind of a temporary turnaround, or T-turnaround, or cul-de-sac, um, the, the inclusion of this alley was, um, a big factor in allowing for kind of more of a conventional stub at the end of the street. Uh, the green areas were intended to be open space, so there's a water quality basin here on the north side, as well as some natural areas to the west and to the east, so that's why those are shown in green, is to denote the open space. And here's a look at the proposed plan, and if you didn't think that the plan changed in between the two slides, uh, I wouldn't fault you, because there really aren't too many differences flipping back and forth between these two. You can see essentially the same number of lots, 25, um, the alley, of course, disappears, the alley is no longer proposed to be included. However, there is now a T-turnaround that is shown on top of that roadway and utility easement that is on the Talawanda property to the south. And here is showing kind of a conceptual view of where this future collector roadway could run in correspondence to that easement, and this would be connecting to Booth Road, so here's the existing intersection of Kerr and Booth. Okay, so, um, there's another notable difference between these two plans, and that has to do with the street pavement width. These are, as far as we know, intended to be public streets, um, so being that they're public streets, we would typically ask that the standards of the code be followed with respect to the roadway specifications, so, um, within the subdivision regulations, there's essentially two options that are given for a local street section. You can either have a 60-foot right-of-way and 35-foot wide pavement, um, or you can have a 50-foot wide right-of-way and 30-foot wide pavement. Uh, what is being proposed is to have right-of-ways that are 60 feet wide, but having 28 feet, uh, of width, uh, from back of, back of curb to back of curb, um, which is different from the previous plan that had shown a 30-foot wide width of street connecting to Roberts Drive, just basically matching the width of Roberts Drive, um, but then Hoover Drive, which is the street as named by the previous South Farm, Section Two plat, um, that was to be at the standard 35 feet of width. Um, so, quite a bit less in terms of the width of the streets. Being that this is a concept plan, it hasn't gone out for department review yet, but of course, we would, uh, rely, uh, pretty heavily upon whatever the engineering department's comments may be with respect to these being future public streets. Um, and then this is just a close-up showing you the T-turnaround slash T-intersection, kind of, uh, giving you a, a glance at what the future roadway connection could ultimately be. Um, it doesn't appear that there's any curbing of sorts that's being proposed around this particular T, not that it necessarily has to be, since it's kind of there, uh, to identify a potential future street in waiting, um, and offer the turnaround ability that the fire department would need in the interim. And these are some sample elevations that Presto Homes has provided us, so, um, they're all intended to be front-loaded, of course, since the alley is no longer included, so all of the driveway curb cuts would be off of Hoover Drive. And, uh, as you can see, there's two stories as well as one stories. So again, to summarize the key differences, the alley removal, the decrease in the street pavement width, and the temporary T-turnaround slash future collector road intersection to the south. That's all I have to share with you about the concept plan for the new South Farm, Section Four, and I'm happy to take any questions from the board.
Can I ask you a question, and this is for everybody, particularly for the new members, just for clarification, this is go, we're viewing this in concept, but this is headed towards a, a plan development.
Correct.
Review process. So to help guide the conversation, and there's a lot in that code, what would be the standards of review, you know, like, what are we holding this to in the plan development code? What flexibility is there, so the conversation's just not all over the place, like, if this comes back to us as a preliminary, what would be the standards you would be looking at to evaluate this?
Sure.
And that would help inform our conversation.
And there hasn't been a full-scale analysis done as of yet, since there hasn't been, you know, a full submittal for a plan development, um, there are, of course, review criteria in the code that we would apply. I think in this situation, just because there is such a unique similarity between the two, that in large part, a lot of that sort of analysis wasn't necessarily done again, but.
Okay.
Um, if you wanted to refer in your code, it would be the, the plan development review criteria, which there are quite a few, I think there's like anywhere from 12 to 15 of those.
Yeah.
Criteria. Um, and there's a number of standards that would apply as well, um, there were some waivers that had to be granted in order for the original proposal to move forward, um, waivers to lot coverage, um, a few other things.
Lot size.
At the prior ordinance here with me, um, lot coverage had to be increased from 40% to 65%, uh, reduction in the front yard setbacks from 30 feet to 15 feet. The, the length of Hoover Drive was problematic with respect to the subdivision regulations because it was 600 feet and the max is usually 500, so that had to be acknowledged as a waiver. So there, there's a number of standards that would have to be applied in the future analysis, so in terms of the concept plan now, it's essentially, you're just reviewing it, you know, as, as proposed, and if you have any feedback with respect to, um, relationship to the comprehensive plan, the principles of good design, um, you know, comparing, kind of comparing the, the prior plan to this new plan, I think would be a good exercise.
And, and just one other additional question, is that the waiver of the dimensional requirements, there's some flexibility in dimensional requirements, does that apply to street widths in this case?
I don't believe so, because those are the standards from the engineer, so, um, I think that these are gonna be public streets, then, um, the only way to potentially accommodate variation from that would be, as the code words it, the city engineer must make the recommendation to the commission, and the commission can accept a, a recommendation to, to vary, but, um, otherwise, the commission does not have the power to vary from those standards for public streets.
Okay. And I would imagine there's caveats for aggravating and mitigating circumstances, not just, I, like, arbitrary change to the dimension. Mr. Webster?
I have two questions. One is, um, is there any understanding about the Talawanda property as to what use it might be put to? It's, it seems like a kind of odd thing, that there's this big piece of land that the schools.
Sure, so I'll refer back to the slideshow and go back to the comprehensive plan slide. Um, it is within the city limits, and the comp plan had designated that as urban neighborhood, so, um, the idea is that, you know, that could be a potential future location for residential development, but of course, since Talawanda owns the land presently, they control the destiny of whether they would ever want to sell for that particular purpose.
But we are not aware of any development ideas.
Not at present, no, there, there hasn't been anything officially proposed.
I can't remember, so please proceed.
I, I have a question, uh, related to Talawanda property. I remember in the first review, uh, the discussion with the alley and turnaround for emergency vehicles, um, and again, this is just off the top of my head, this is the first time I've seen a proposal that goes onto someone else's property to accomplish that. This is the first time I've seen a proposal that goes onto someone else's property to accomplish that, which I'm not opposed to. It's a roadway easement. Because it's an easement, is there an inherent right to build their T for Hoover? Do they have the right, or does the city have the right to grant that on Talawanda property?
So you're getting into legal questions, but I would say, the way I would answer that here today is we are aware that it's a roadway and utility easement, so it may be used for roadway and utility purposes. So I don't believe that would extend to actually developing with land uses. On that particular stretch, it would have to be basically exclusively for a roadway or utility purpose, which I would believe that a T-turnaround would would serve that purpose.
Well, the reason I ask is I think this is one of the first times we've ever had, I mean, the concept has come up of you can't build on someone else's property. We've talked about it with sidewalks and bike trails, and funny enough, Robert's Drive is, I don't own that. I can't build this. There was a condition of building the bike trail, and it wasn't our property and things of that nature. So the caveat that makes this interesting is it's an easement. It's not. So again, I know this is more Q and A, but that was something that caught my attention because I was like, it's a logical place to put the T.
That was initiated by staff, just so you know. We requested that.
Okay. I just, it's the first time I think I've ever seen that. Yeah, all the other ones did involve an easement, so that's why I was just curious. No, I'm supportive. I like it. I just haven't seen it.
Minor.
Did you think of the second question?
Yeah, I did. I think I know the answer, but is, can you just talk to us a little about the site topography?
Site topography. I would prefer to let the applicant speak to that. I don't have any, any sort of a topo plan. It's not, not to say that we haven't received one in the past, but here at the concept plan stage, I don't think that was as much of a focus. Good question.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Moore? All right, seeing none. Ms. Reed, would you?
Good evening. Etta Reed Fairbacher on behalf of John Bear. With me tonight, I also have Joe Cristo with JA Development, Cristo Homes. So if you have any questions for him specifically, he'd be more than happy, I'm sure, to answer those for you. I do have a couple of slides. So as always, Zach did a great job kind of explaining the history and how we got to where we are. This, again, is the previously approved plan that expired earlier, well, about a year ago in 2023. 25 lots, half of them, approximately half are front-loaded, half are rear-loaded with the alley, public streets. And if you remember on this one with the PUD, that was all exterior maintenance by the HOA. So now what JA Development is choosing to do is to do similar 25 single-family homes, but they will all be front-entry. So the alley has gone away, which has enabled us to increase the green space somewhat behind where the alley used to be. But we were also able, what we did is we increased the depth of those lots by about 15 feet apiece. So the lots on the, excuse me, on the west side are a little deeper than they previously were. Let's see here. So the alley was removed, the lots were deeper. Hoover has extended into the school district property. Staff, as staff has indicated, we are looking to do 28-foot-wide streets. I know when we did South Forest Edge Section Two, we asked for variance and worked that out with the engineer at that time. We'd be looking to do something similar, talking to Mr. Otto like we did then, to see if he would support that request. The right-of-way width does remain the same. So what that would do, by going with the narrower street, we'd have a wider tree lawn for the street trees. Mrs. Webster, you did ask about the topography. It lays very nicely. We had, we have engineered this once. The engineer will only have to tweak slightly to accommodate the removal of the alley. So that, because it lays so nicely, that is why we are able to keep a lot of the vegetation to the east and the west to serve as a nice buffer. So the amount of open space will remain relatively same. Lot coverage, you know, it's really not a big change from what we had approved before. And so more detailed information regarding the housing stock will be provided with the final PUD. But this is some samples of what they've done elsewhere. And so I guess if you have any questions, or we'd love all the feedback you have on what we're proposing.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Reed?
I, go ahead.
Sorry. So I guess an important question is, what is the sort of income level or, you know, cost? What kind, you know, that you're aiming for in this proposal?
I'll let Mr. Cristo.
Hello, Joe Cristo with Cristo Homes and JA Development. Right now, we understand that housing affordability is a challenge for all new construction. With the size of lots and what we're proposing, we're trying to achieve a starting price that would come in under $300,000. We have the ability to option the homes with the finishes to the customer desires, but it is our goal to have these homes starting point under $300,000.
Thank you.
What is the general square footage of those homes?
Ms. Reed had referred that this is the product we had done elsewhere. This is actually, we build homes similar to this, but this concept is designed for these lot sizes. And staff had recommended we take a look at some different profiles and facades that were one-car garages, which add a bit more glass to the front elevations. The square footage of these homes around the 1,300 to 1,600 square foot range, obviously the two stories being the larger of that range.
Thank you.
So here's a question, and this is just about, the previous design had the back-loaded garages with the alleys, which was approved, and, you know, you're coming back with a different thing. Since that time, we have kind of adopted a comprehensive plan that would have loved your back-loaded garages. You know, we don't mandate it in the code, but I think the comprehensive plan in this kind of district is looking, I mean, I could read off this urban neighborhood, but it kind of, it's a walkability. Buildings want to engage the street. If we don't do the alleys, the question, my points comes to like the building elevations, which is how these buildings can engage the street. Because what I'm looking at in a lot of your models is what some people might call snout houses. You know, the garage is the forward-facing facade to the building. So tell me how you, how, if you didn't have the back-loaded alleys and we had to do front-loaded, how can you, which models are these can still fulfill the spirit of not having an auto-dominated kind of landscape where the buildings kind of, the front door engages the street as opposed to a double garage facing the street? I see one, looks like a one-car garage that kind of does it. Yeah, can you tell me about how the buildings, so we don't end up with a variety of houses that basically have garages as the front door? How can you do that architecturally so it still achieves kind of the goal of the urban neighborhood?
This is your architectural expert here. I'm afraid he'll start speaking at this point. It is, it is the challenge with people with vehicles. The rear alley also presented some complications. Some of us have kids, they play in the backyard. Well, there's vehicles moving in the backyard, and there's a complexity of the product. Well, this side would market to one profile and this to another. So we know who we are, and we want to go to a certain market segment that understands who we are. You might be mixing some, and they might not like to be in that same community. But the fortunate issue here is, we like to be challenged on the elevations. To get creative with the two-car garages and one-car garages are an inevitability of people who wish to purchase these homes. Sam had a great idea with the one-car elevations. It's nothing we had done. It's not done that much in the market, but you see what it does to the elevation of the home. It actually adds more living space on that first floor. Wasn't something I'd thought of, but we went and researched, and we had these elevations drawn up on some concept we had researched. I think that's a, that's a great start. Otherwise, for a two-car garage, they are going to dominate facade of a generally narrow product. And we are looking to stay attainable. With mixing the concepts, we always ask ourselves, are we making this less attainable for the buyer? But we're open to some comments on how to, on how to push this. But on the top left, you have a one-car garage ranch design. It gets, it gets creative. It's a different look than, than your garage dominated on the two-car garages.
So there is, there is an opportunity to, if it's going to be front-loaded, to through the building elevations to soften the vehicular, you know, there's some ways to do that.
With the one car is, is one way to do it. With, with the two cars, you can break up the bays into two single-car bays, which gets more decorative. But beyond that, I do not know how to soften an eight-two-car garage dominating the front. There's, there's glass you can put in the garage doors. There's the carriage, little impediments you can put on there. But besides that, I'm not aware of other options.
Would these have basements?
Please?
Would these have basements, or would they be slab?
Some of them, we're still debating that with the marketability, what the market wants and the price points we're trying to achieve. They could absolutely be basements. Those could, we offer both in all the communities, in the various communities we build in. Some we offer slab foundations along with basements, some are all basements.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, it might not be my preference aesthetically, but I think more important than a car-dominated aesthetic is the fact that it's less car-dominated because there's an entire street removed behind in the alley, right? So we save on asphalt and concrete, which should lower the environmental footprint. And if you look at Morgan Circle just to the south of it, many of them are garage-forward as well. So just commentary, not a question, sorry.
It's feedback time.
Yeah, I guess that's, we're not like ending public sessions, so that. I mean, I guess the thing that, like, just the, for those of you guys new to this, interestingly, concept reviews are actually not written into our code, which if we update the code, we probably should. And so it's non-binding, it's a conversation, but it's worked out really well to identify issues and that kind of stuff. So, you know, ultimately, the plan development standard, there are approval standards to that, and they're similar to our subdivision code, but they're distinct. And the one thing I would say is they're distinct is that because it's a discretionary process, there's more discretion, but what guides that discretion, at least I think ideally in the code, is the comprehensive plan. You know, that you're going to look back to the comprehensive plan. So what is the comprehensive plan should say should be the kind of pattern of development here? So one of the decision-making standards among many is how it conforms to the comprehensive plan. What I would say to this also is that, you know, by right subdivision, because it's by right, the subdivision conforms to the subdivision code, but not the comprehensive plan. It's pretty hard to say no to it because it conforms to the. But these ones, there's a little bit more latitude for asking some of those qualitative conversations that, that tie back to the comprehensive plan. And that's the, and I'll just summarize, I mean, I think the difficulty here is our comprehensive plan aspires to something. I mean, it aspires to back-loaded garages. It aspires to not having driveways. It aspires to a newerbinist pattern of development and aesthetics because that fulfills all the goals that people talked about, about the walkability and the compactness and all those things. So at one level, you know, you can't exactly hold a development to that, but it would guide you. I guess I would also just say contextually, we see how many proposals, there's the code and our aspirations, and then there's the reality of the development process that how many different iterations have been looked at here?
This is technically five, but whatever.
So, you know, the question then becomes about the perfect and the, you know, not letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. So that's just context for how to think about something like this, I think.
I had one comment, which is that in, I think one of the principles that we're kind of showing, you know, of interest in this community is engaging the street and that the possibility could exist with what you are proposing to maybe reduce the front yard or create some variety in the setback off the street to sort of, you know, engage that streetscape a little bit more. And I think it's worth mentioning that at least, I don't know if it's codified, but there is a lot of discussion here about discouraging people from having grass front yards and to do more native planting and sort of breaking down this obsession with the front yard being the same on every lot and all grass. So I just would encourage you to look at that front, that front yard experience, and if you could, you could in some way make it less suburban and slightly more urban by, by looking at the dimensions from the street to the house. And, you know, I don't know how that all figures in your marketability equation, but I think it's worth thinking about.
So a couple of thoughts I have. I do like the concept of, you know, kind of the smaller house. I mean, we have the luxury of living in a, in a pretty spacious house, but, and Sam's heard me talk about this a million times. When we lived in Iowa, we lived in basically a townhouse, 1,400 square feet, one-car garage. So I want to make sure we're creating options that meet the market, meet the population, but also where, and this, and I hope this doesn't sound wrong, we're not telling people how they have to live. Having five people in 1,400 square feet with a one-car garage and trying to get a minivan in there? Kind of tough. I love my two-and-a-half-car garage right now. So it can't be everything to everybody. So that's where I like the variety of what you offer because some of our target markets are more affordable housing, definitely, newer families, so you don't have to go buy that suburban five-bedroom monster, and you can have a, maybe a smaller house while you have smaller kids. But also, there's definitely a need for housing for independent older adults. So having, having those varieties and options. And I agree with Ms. Webster, the versatility of, if this isn't going to be an HOA-maintained exterior, having some of the, I forget the names of the neighborhoods, but out towards Owls Landing, you do see some nice variety where there are some people with these beautiful, I call them kidney beans. You know, they have these big gardens with bushes and trees and not a lot of grass, but then a couple of houses. So I liked what you were offering, you know, the smaller blue house, your flexibility and adaptability on converting the space of the one car. And again, I don't expect, nor can we be everything to everybody, but I do think that some of the spice or appeal of a neighborhood is variety. So even though we don't want a cookie cutter suburban neighborhood, I was just in Columbus near campus and Fifth, and they just have the cookie cutter jammed together, no driveways, everything. So I do really appreciate kind of how you're looking at that and the individuality for the, for the occupants. So I kind of like the creative direction you're going and your openness to staff's feedback and creativity. So thank you.
So I will jump in. I mean, I, like, I, you know, the time we spent on planning commission review, the staff time, commission time, to see developments not actually happen is discouraging. The amount of time we put into things that don't come to be is, we would prefer, if we're going to do this tonight, I would rather see something get developed and the fruits of all of those labors. So to me, at this point, given all the history and given how similar this is to previous things like, like, I would like to see this come to be. I would say, however, that the, the change from what was proposed to what is, makes it harder to conform with the comprehensive plan vision. I'm not going to insist that the alleys be reinstated. to insist that the alleys be reinstated, but I would like to see that mitigated in some other way. And, and one of those things I think is that this not be a line of two-car garages where that's the front facade of going down the street, you know, that I think that, that a variety, I mean, if, if you were to look at our code, I mean, one of the goals that we should be looking to is that it would facilitate a construction of a variety of dwelling types to, to serve the comprehensive plan goal of diverse housing. These are all going to be single-family houses, so it's not really, but I think that some variety of architectural, I think some of these units at a one-car garage makes a lot of sense. I mean, a lot of people might prefer to have the living space than the garages. So I would love to see, and, you know, I don't know whether it's a, it's not an enforceable requirement, but I'd like to see some variety there to soften the, the vehicular orientation. The other thing I would say, and this is more of a concrete, I just made a pun, that's like, I don't want the street to be a, a, just a, a straight line of driveway aprons either. You know, like I would prefer to see a single, a single entry garage apron, you know, like I don't know what the standards are for garage apron, for driveway aprons. But you can imagine with a two-car garage, you may end up with a double-loaded, do we have those kind of like double-loaded aprons? And then basically the variety, the whole length of the neighborhood sidewalk is driveway apron. So even if it's a two-car garage, I'd like to see a single-car driveway apron. So again, we see some variety in that. What was the last thing that I wanted to say? Oh, this is not so much to you, but to Sam and Zach, to the city engineer, our street widths are one of those ways in which our standards are out of sync with our goals. And if you look at our comprehensive plan, talks about neighborhood streets can be 10 to 13 feet, you know, I think it's, you know, that I think we've been approving narrower neighborhood streets for a whole host of really good reasons. It reduces the construction cost. It calms the traffic. It reduces the stormwater impact. We have overdesigned so many of our streets and we reap the fruits in speeding cars. So to me, I mean, I think that the city engineers has, has shown flexibility in this. So even if it's not, if we can't waive those dimensional requirements, I'm just saying personally, I would support the narrower streets here. I think 35 is like a crazy high width for a street of this character.
If you're pulling a travel trailer, it's joyous.
Well, that's the thing. And you end up with like cars, I mean, it, it will require some signage probably, you know, no parking on this side or however you're going to handle it. But we have been wedded to some pretty wide streets and, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping while our development standard review, take a look at some of those engineering things in the subdivision code. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm going to assume when we get there, the numbers are going to be lower than they are today. That's my hope.
Well, and so when we were looking at the map, one of the things that I saw, even though Booth is not built in that, is that becomes a avoidance of an intersection where people can go out in Roberts down Hoover. So I mean, there may be some mitigation factors, the engineer. I don't know if it's the width of the street or whatever, because that doesn't mean people will go slower. It just means if they speed, it's more dangerous. But living on a wide street, I know people don't understand 25 is not 40.
Cause it's designed to encourage people to go 40. So the Euro is pretty wide.
It is very wide. Okay. Any other questions for our developer and engineers?
Does staff have any questions for us about?
Is there anything you'd like to contribute to the greater good? Anything you'd like to negate that we said?
I think you guys have covered it pretty well.
Okay. All right. Seeing that there are, actually, is there anyone from the public who would like to, sorry, I saw two people. I was like, I did say that, didn't I? Gentlemen?
Please state your name. Mike Rudolph, please.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Oxford Planning Commission. My name is Mike Rudolph. I live at 200 Morgan Circle out in the current existing South Farm Home Owners Association. I really was not, since this was a concept phase discussion tonight, going to make any comments, but Zach somewhat challenged me there when he put up the original plan for South Farm from back in 1990. And the reason I wanted to make a comment was there are a few new faces in planning commission and I wanted them to know that our South Farm Home Owners Association, which I've been a part of from the very beginning as we built the second home out there, is always very involved in these phases, not only with you all, but also with the developers that we are looking forward to building the neighborhood. We have set vacant out there for a long period of time. And when the original South Farm Four with Mike Shea and his development came before us, as well as Shane Kaufman and the Heron Pond development, we were able to have great conversations with both of the developers as well as staff on what we felt like would be very appropriate out there in our subdivision. Because we really enjoy what South Farm has become in terms of a, kind of a community spot for people to come, use the pond out there as well. We are already, as you could tell by the development with Cobblestone, we have a great neighbor out there in Cobblestone Community Church, and we're arm-in-arm with them during their development phase. And now we're looking very forward to working with Joe and his team and Baron Becker, clearly with Etta and John in this future possibility as well. We do want to be very involved in this process. So if any of the members of planning wish to hear more from South Farm, we certainly would be happy to make comments with you as well. But thank you for your time and attention at this. Take care.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to share their thoughts? All right. Seeing none. At this point, the only thing on our agenda is a motion to adjourn. So I'll accept that.
Want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Whoa, we've got it on the record. All right. We have a motion. Does anyone want to second that?
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Perfect. We are adjourned.